Welcome to the June 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Bill Shacklet has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor, if you'll join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you for this day and for the blessings that you've given us for the country, for the state, for this community that we live in. Lord, we pray your blessings on all those that labor to provide services for our community. We pray for our first responders, dear Lord, of our police and fire personnel that keep us safe and protect us. Lord, thank you for all those that labor to provide services in our community. Lord, we pray tonight that you'd give us discernment as we make decisions for the betterment of our community, make our hearts right, help our minds think clearly, and may we do that which would honor you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a Stars Award tonight. Ms. Russell.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, the purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize and reward those who go above and beyond their normal duties in providing outstanding customer service. Captain Tim Lampit nominated firefighter Andrew Carter for the following act of service. On May 4th, 2021 firefighter Carter went above and beyond to save a one-year-old girl's life. Carter returned to Station 9 from Station 4 while Engine 9 was on call. Shortly after arriving at Station 9, a man pulled up to the station with a one-year-old child having trouble breathing. While Carter was alone and without medical supplies, he jumped into action and began performing lifesaving intervention measures. Carter thought quickly and outside the box to find supplies in the station to save the baby's life. Carter kept the child alive until another engine and paramedics arrived on the scene to assist. Carter handled himself with poise and confidence during a time of stress. He managed both the child and the upset family member, all while keeping dispatch abreast of the situation. Thank you, Carter, for your outstanding performance while under pressure and trying circumstances.
Congratulations. Probably could just adjourn the meeting right now. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have 15 items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added or removed?
There aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. In old business, on second reading, you have ordinance 21018. This is revisions to Chapter 4 of Alcoholic Beverages. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. In old business, on second reading, you have ordinance 21018. This is revisions to Chapter 4 of Alcoholic Beverages. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to new business. You have ordinance 21005 and Resolution 21R09 to amend the city code to permit consumption of alcohol on airport property. Mr. Gerke.
Hello, Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, we're just now opening up the new terminal, and in there is the business center that has some wonderful space for meetings and classrooms, events, and social events. And as we prepare to use that facility, one of the items that we need to do address was the ability to use and provide use for that space and alcohol in that area. We use the template that was provided by our Parks and Recreation and guidance by our legal department to move forward. The Airport Commission has approved the rules and regulations for that, and so before you is the ordinance and all that for your consideration.
Any questions?
No questions, move for approval.
A second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to ordinance 20007 to amend the city code to reflect UED merger with streets. King, Ms. Adams.
How are you doing, sir?
Good.
Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me tonight. I'm coming before you to discuss the changes and seek your approval for the changes of the tree management ordinance to better align it with the merger of UED and street. We need to change the verbiage to align with the title and structure over there, and it's also dissolving the UED mentioned from there and also dissolving two inactive boards. I think we talked about the way that the board is, excuse me, the, there's an appeal process that goes along with this, and it's going to be shifted to the BZA if there's any appeal on staff actions, and we're requesting approval on these changes, and I'll be able to answer any questions if you need me.
Any questions for Mr. Adams?
One question. The agenda says ordinance 20007? Is that just a typo?
Mine says 21.
Yeah, one says 21 and one says 20.
Oh, on the agenda.
On 19.
It should be 21 to 07. That's what the actual.
That's what the actual ordinance says, is 2107.
Okay, so we'll consider on first reading ordinance 21007.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, King. All right, we'll move to Resolution 21R23, fiscal year 21, Murfreesboro City Schools' budget. This is the Ninth Amendment.
Hi, good evening. City Schools comes before you tonight with our final resolution and budget amendment series for FY '21. Three budget amendments for a new grant that we received in the amount of $100,000 for teacher stipends, transfer of indirect costs from one of our federal funds, and to recognize some education debt service.
King, any questions on this amendment?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 21, Resolution 21R24, fiscal year 22, Murfreesboro City Schools' budget. This is the First Amendment.
This is our First Amendment, yes. We have two new grants, and one is the Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity Grant, otherwise known as the ELC or Nursing Grant, and that's just over, just under $2.4 million to cover the cost of nursing salaries, COVID testing, and some minor construction projects in order to facilitate COVID testing at our schools. The second one is the 21st Century Grant that's used for tutoring for about 500 students, and this is, these are both new grants for next year.
Quick question. Are we, are you guys pretty certain that the, you know, what you use the money for is going to be for sure, this will be covered? You know, because I know they've been changing a lot of stuff we're dealing with, even as late as today.
Yes, even as late as today, and it is, it is our confidence that we will be using this money as approved by the state.
All right. I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you. All right, we'll move to land use matters. We have the rezoning of 17.25 acres located along the north side of Asher's Fort Drive. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is a rezoning request along the north side of Asher's Fort Drive. It's for 17.25 acres. It's the area colored in purple on the map before you. It's currently zoned commercial fringe. This was, this has been zoned commercial fringe for about the past four years or so when the Waite property was annexed into the city and zoned. The balance of the property is zoned RSA Type 1, which is a single-family residential zoning classification. Mr. Chip Lloyd is in the process of developing a subdivision on the property to the south of Asher's Fort Drive called Waite's Creek Crossing. Waite's Creek Crossing is a mixture of single-family detached homes and single-family zero lotline homes. The property that is in purple, that's zoned CF, see the northern border of it is kind of, or the northern border of the purple shaded property is kind of a jagged line. That's because that represents Spence Creek. Spence Creek forms the northern border of the requested area, and Mr. Lloyd brought this to us today saying that, or brought this to us earlier this year, saying that the viability of this property to develop as commercial because of the location of Spence Creek through there and the fact that a bridge would have to be built over Spence Creek, also because of the depth of that CF zoned property, the front edge along New Salem Highway is really more viable as commercial property than the, than the back portion. And because of the difficulty in, in developing that with commercial with Spence Creek being located there along its northern boundary, Mr. Lloyd approached us about rezoning options to continue his subdivision north of Asher's Fort Drive. It was at staff suggestion that he pursued the RS6 zoning classification, which will enable slightly larger single-family detached lots than what he's building to the south. RS6, of course, requires 6,000 square foot minimum lot sizes, all single-family detached As I mentioned, it's 17.25 acres. Because of the location of Spence Creek, you will not be able to completely maximize that property because of the flood plain and floodway located on that property. But he submitted, just for, just for informational purposes, a potential layout of the subdivision along the north side of Asher's Fort Drive. It shows approximately 43 single-family lots. Of course, that may fluctuate once he and his engineering firm get in and do additional, additional design work, but that just gives you a representation of, of what could be developed on that property if it were zoned RS6. The Murfreesboro Future Land Use Map, Murfreesboro 2035 Future Land Use Map does identify the subject property as neighborhood commercial for its development as neighborhood commercial. I think that's probably more of a function of the way it was zoned, utilizing the existing zoning of commercial fringe to inform the, the future land use map. But we as staff feel that, that this deviation from the future land use map is, is warranted due to the, the limitations on the property because of Spence Creek. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on May the 5th and voted to recommend its approval. Mr. Chip Lloyd and Mr. Clyde Roundtree are in the, are in attendance. If you have any questions for them as the, as the developers of the property, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Okay. Any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you would, come to the podium. You'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. If you'll keep all your questions directed towards the council, we'll get those addressed at the end of the public hearing. If you would, state your name and address when you come to the podium, that would be appreciated. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 21OZ15.
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 23. This is a rezoning request for approximately 78 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Wilkinson Pike, and Willow Oak Trail. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is for the rezoning for the Clary Park, Clary Park PUD. I think I've been corrected. I've called it Clara Park quite a number of times, and so I've been told that I need to pronounce it correctly by Ms. Green over there, Clary Park PUD. It's also commercial highway zoning identified in the red color. The PUD is in the blue color. This should look familiar to you all because the City Council conducted a public hearing on this back in late October of last year and then voted to deny the request. The applicants went back to the drawing board, significantly altered their plan, significantly reduced the number of units, and worked with staff on their plan to address the concerns. Consequently, it went before our Planning Commission on May the 5th, and then the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval. I'll go over some numbers with you very quickly. I know that Mr. Taylor has a lengthy PowerPoint presentation that he'll be making to you. So the 2020 Clara Park Plan, I'll zoom in here. So it included a total of 600 apartment units, 290 townhome units, and zero single-family detached units, for a total of 890 overall units. The 2021 original Clara Park Plan that went before Planning Commission on May the 5th included 488 apartment units, 182 townhome units, and 38 single-family detached units. One of the main changes to the plan was the decrease in the number of apartment units, in the number of townhome units, and the addition of single-family detached units. So we went down from a total number of dwelling units of 890 to 708. At the Planning Commission meeting on May the 5th, the Planning Commission approved it with the, with further reductions, and Mr. Taylor will go over the specifics of where those reductions have occurred in a moment, but the total number of dwelling units now is at 620. So from last year's plan, from last fall's plan, we were at 890 units, and now we are at 620 units, a reduction of 270 dwelling units, including half of the apartment units being taken out. So we were at 600 apartment units, and now 300 apartment units are proposed. The number of townhome units is down to 282 and keeping the 38 single-family detached units. So you can tell the difference between what went to the Planning Commission on May the 5th and what the Planning Commission conditioned approval on. So there was a multifamily area that was changed to single-family attached or townhomes. So the 2021 Clara Park Plan, the original one, there's a further decrease in multifamily, but an increase in townhomes to make up for the, the further decrease in multifamily. So I hope I haven't thrown too many, too many numbers at you, but the Planning Commission took this back up again on May the 19th and confirmed that, that the changes that were made to the plan after the May 5th meeting were in keeping with the intent of the Planning Commission's approval. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor to come up here and give a presentation. I'll also mention that if you have specific questions about the plan, we do have Ms. Margaret Ann Green here, who has put in a substantial amount of work on this, on this plan with, working with the applicants, and if you have questions after Mr. Taylor's presentation regarding road improvements or drainage concerns, City Engineer Ms. Michelle Emerson is present and available to answer any questions regarding those items.
Thank you, Matthew. Matt Taylor of SCC. Appreciate the time here tonight, Mayor and Council, accompanied by Mr. Walt O'Shea from the Hines Company, the applicant on the project, as well as Mr. Kevin Gunther from Reagan Smith, did most of the land planning on the project, and then Mr. Tommy Smith representing the landowner. So as Mr. Blomley said, we're here tonight to represent and present the Clary Park PUD, which I think each of you are very familiar with, since Matthew introduced and reminded you of the application from last year. So we spent the last seven to eight months making very significant changes to the plan. The largest and most impactful of those, I think, is probably the reduction in the multifamily count. We reduced that count from, by 50% from the previous proposal of 600 down to 300. We furthermore reduced the amount of single-family attached. We originally proposed 290. This plan has 182 with a possibility of up to 282. And then one thing we're very excited about, we think you will be too, is the introduction of the single-family detached homes. We've introduced and proposed a total of 38 of those. Of course, with the reduction of density, we have also cut our traffic impact, depending on whether you're talking about an AM or a PM peak time, we've cut that density or that traffic generation by 10 to 20%. We have worked very closely with staff on the single-family attached architecture. That was a very lengthy conversation over multiple meetings last time, and so we think we have come to a very quality project, very quality product that we'll all be proud of. We think that you'll agree with that. And then one of the large sticking points last time was the lack of the berm that was supposed to have been built, and so we have made very significant progress. The grading is there, the landscaping has been installed, and they are finishing the irrigation, which will let them install the sod. So we think that will be completed up entirely within the next few days. And then, of course, we've worked closely with staff on traffic. We have not taken away any of our previous traffic commitments. We've actually added an additional two turn lanes that we will construct as early as this fall. And then we worked closely with staff on drainage to help protect Wilkinson Pike in the vicinity of our project and actually install some of the drainage improvements that the city would have done with the Wilkinson Pike widening. So the land itself is about 78 acres. It's probably the last large piece along Medical Center Parkway. It generally drains away from Medical Center Parkway, so from the south to the north and to the east. It is currently zoned MU, as Mr. Blomley said, which is consistent with the surrounding land uses and zonings, and consistent with the future land use map. Our reason for the request is to allow the single-family attached and detached, which are not currently allowed by Rite inside the MU zoning district, and along with a few minor exceptions for setbacks, which we think allows for a better quality product design here. As I mentioned, we have requested a PUD zoning as well as a CH zoning. It's just under 78 acres in size. We have presented two options in the book. Both of those are in there, spelling out exactly what those options are and the differences. I'll go over those in a minute. Of course, everything that we're doing here will have underground utilities. As I mentioned previously, it's a mixture of detached, attached, and multifamily, and we're still maintaining a high level of commercial uses here. Of course, all of this will be maintained and oversown by a HOA with a master architect, just like the Avenue. So we like that model over there. We've actually already interviewed several firms. We've not made a final selection there, but we've got some very good quality candidates that are familiar with the Gateway and Murfreesboro standards, so we think you'll be happy with that selection when it's ultimately made. We're also continuing to maintain the installation of street trees, decorative streetlights, just like the rest of Medical Center and the Gateway. We will continue, we will continue to build a continuous turn lane along Medical Center Parkway like the other projects. All that's typical to the developments in the Gateway. We're setting ourselves apart in that we have set very firm timeframes on those installations, not only by the progress of the development, but hard calendar dates as well, and all that's outlined inside the booklet itself. And then we're not requesting any additional multifamily. Today by Rite, the property could build about 488 units, and we've cut that number down to 300, as Matthew, Mr. Blomley said earlier. The two options, the first option, Option A, is the only plan that we can build for the next three years. That includes 38 single-family detached, 182 single-family attached, and then 300 multifamily units, and then just under 38 acres commercial. That's this plan here. The only difference between this plan and the next plan I'll show you is going to be in Area 7, which is going to be in the lower right-hand corner of the plan. Under Option A, the only thing that we can build in Area 7 is commercial or office building. Hines is a very experienced office developer there and thinks they can go and attract that. Option B, same amount of single-family detached, same amount of multifamily. We are requesting 100 additional single-family attached down in Area 7, and that's only if we cannot garner that office user in those first three years. The single-family detached, we've located those in two areas. First area being along Wilkinson Pike to respect the neighbors and the battlefield and that existing condition along Wilkinson Pike. The other would be along the extension of Willow Oak, both of those shown in the highlighted red areas here. We've requested shallower setbacks in these areas to create a nice streetscape. All these homes will be alley loaded, so I think it'd be a very high-quality product. We have set a maximum height of 35 feet or two stories, which is consistent with all of our other single-family heights in the city. A minimum of 1,800 square feet of livable area. Raised porches, which was a big item of discussion in the first application. These will be transferred through an HPR, and so all the maintenance and management will be by third-party HOA company. And then setbacks are a little shallower, but that's really a design element. High-quality materials, brick, stone, very limited amount of cement board siding in the accents, and the vinyl will just be in the trim and softet areas. We really, when we started looking at this architecture for not only the detached but the attached homes, we took our inspiration from Berry Farms over in Franklin and then added our own style or twist to that. It's much less farmhousey than the previous application and less reliance on the cement board. And so you'll see a lot of stacked porches, a lot of detail around the windows, a lot of brick, and we tried to maintain the same sort of architecture on the attached so that it is a consistent theme across the community. We have spread those attached across three separate areas, Area 2, 6, and 7, highlighted in red here. Again, these are all alley loaded. They'll either front on a public street or on a, on a lawn area. Same building heights as the detached, minimum of 1,400 square feet in livable area, all alley loaded. These will have the raised porches as well, and HPRs, and then setbacks. And then one thing you'll notice inside the book is we have self-restricted against selling these to any large rental community developers, so all this will be developed as a for-sale product. Same quality materials here as in the detached. You'll see each of these has been really designed to be five individual units instead of one big building. You'll see the stacked porches as well as a limited Multifamily is just this single area of about 11 acres, 300 units. This architecture is very similar. Actually, it's identical to the previous application. I think everybody was satisfied with that. It's four-story buildings maximum. We do have some ground floor office in one of the southern buildings. We have these highly amenitized, not only inside the buildings, but on the outside, and we have some exterior detached garages, and we have allowed for a shallower setback along Robert Rose for a better design and streetscape there. Same materials. Of course, everything here will go through a full GDO review process with the Planning Commission. It's an example of what that architecture will look like. See the varying roof lines, a lot of insetts, good-quality product. This is some of the amenities. We created this grand lawn concept for the multifamily. We think this will be a high-activity zone. People will be drawn to this. It's where you'll create your neighbors and your friends for this development. Commercial areas are all shown in the red here. We have varied uses amongst those areas. Some of the intensity, we want low, lower intensity back toward Wilkinson, more highly intense along Commercial Highway, along the Medical Center Parkway. We've done the same thing with our building heights to lower those along Wilkinson Pike. Our uses started out with the CH or Commercial Highway, allowed uses, and we pared those back based on nuances or obtrusive uses such as maybe the cash advanced businesses. Again, the setbacks will vary depending on which area you're in. All that's outlined in the book. Still the same high-quality materials. Here's a few examples of buildings that Hines has built, they could bring here. And we've continued that grand lawn concept from the multifamily into the commercial areas. I would make this akin to the central part of the Avenue, except for more activity, grander areas. We think this is a great spot for three or four restaurants for that activity zone. The amenities, we think the largest amenity here is the location and the uses around. We think that's going to attract a lot of our buyers and residents. We want to construct some of our own, starting with the seat walls to round out the signals and the signalized intersections. We will have two different pools in the, in the development, one of those in Area 2, the townhouses, the other with the apartments. And of course, on the eastern side, that will be anchored by the grand lawn concept. Will draw people across the entire development. And then in our residential areas, these will have a lot of seating areas, fire pits, walking trails. These will be some pretty natural, passive conversation areas. And then we've connected all these with a greenway-type trail system, connects not only into the grand lawn, it parallels Clary Lane, will go through the townhomes inside of Area 2, and eventually connect into the multipurpose trail for Wilkinson Pike. And then we think this project rounds out the transportation network in the area. It completes Wilkinson Pike. It completes the continuous right turn lane along Medical Center Parkway. We will be installing two turn lanes along Wilkinson, one at West Park Drive as well as Willow Oak Trail. And then, of course, completes both the intersections and the fourth leg of the Avenue intersections at Willow Oak and Honey Locust. So we did host a neighborhood meeting, had about 20 people show up. We thought the changes were received very well. Actually had a couple of people request specific uses, which we were already pursuing, so hopefully we can bring those to fruition. Did want to point out that, you know, we have heard council's concerns, heard staff's concerns, heard the neighbors' concerns, so we think that this new plan addresses all those by limiting our heights, which will respect the neighbors and the battlefield more. We think that we have tried to address and lower our impact on Wilkinson Pike by getting the berm constructed like we should have three years ago, putting detached homes along Wilkinson Pike. We have doubly reinforced our commitment to the development standards by raising the bar inside the book as well as committing to this master architect review process, just like what happened at the Avenue. We have continued to maintain our high level of traffic improvements. We've added to that even though we've decreased density and decreased trips. And then we have continued to work with staff to come up with drainage solutions that will protect Wilkinson Pike in the vicinity of the development. Not saying we're going to fix everything along Wilkinson Pike. I don't think any one project can do that, but we're not going to exacerbate, and we're trying to help where we can. And I think the biggest change, obviously, is the density. Went from almost 900 units down to just over 600. It could be as low as about 520 units at the end of the day. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing that you might have.
What about, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, this goes here.
I know you're going to build these in phases.
Yes, ma'am.
What phase are you going to probably start with?
So we will start with some of the commercial along Medical Center Parkway, and then we would start with a mixture of single-family detached and attached coming off the Wilkinson Pike side. The first thing you'll see activity-wise out there will be the construction of the turn lanes on Wilkinson Pike. The city is actually scheduled to surface, re-surface Wilkinson Pike this fall, and so we're trying to get ahead of that with our construction. No reason for y'all to spend the money and then us tear it right back up. So you'll see that even before you see anything else on site going on.
When do you think the entire project, how long would that take, you think, roughly?
So it really depends on probably the absorption of the commercial that, you know, you've seen the rest of Medical Center, that, that can take some time. We think that most of our infrastructure will be completed within the next three to five years as far as roadway goes. The buildings themselves, we could have some out parcels that sit out there for a little longer. Obviously, we want that to tick off as quick as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, what was the, under the original MU zoning, those 70 acres, what was the count that could go on the property, the density?
That you could, we could have done 488 apartments previously, and so we've cut that to 300 under this plan.
Okay.
Mr. Taylor, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
You said that these units wouldn't be able to be sold to corporate renters. That's just you guys, secondary owners would be able to, correct?
So if, if, if a individual owner wants to rent that or sell it to somebody, they absolutely, they could, but we're not, we're not going to go sell to, for instance, an American Homes for Rent that's coming in to develop it to rent out the entire development, so.
But a secondary owner could sell to American.
They could if they wanted to. We're, yes, sir.
All right, we need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this 78-acre rezoning request, please come to the All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 21OZ16.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move to rescheduling public hearing for zoning ordinance amendments. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We did have another public hearing scheduled for tonight, and it was actually advertised. It was for a zoning ordinance amendment, kind of cleaning up some language with regards to the RSA zone, the RS6 zone, townhomes. In May, the governor signed into law a bill that requires any kind of ordinance dealing with exterior building materials in a very specific way, and so we met with the legal department and found out that there were some things that we needed to do to meet the, the letter of the law with respect to the new, the new law. So we, so obviously, we're not conducting that public hearing tonight, but we need to reschedule it. Been working with Mr. Tucker and his staff on making sure that we cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is. And so we would request that you reschedule this public hearing. It's actually, we have to separate out the portions that deal with exterior materials into a separate ordinance, so it will actually be two public hearings, and we would recommend either July 29th or August the 5th for that public hearing date. Or a public hearing date for both public hearings that will be scheduled.
You want to have the first one on the 29th and the second one on the 5th?
No, we would prefer them to go all on one night. Just the, the 29th and the 5th are just two, two different options for you to choose from.
How's the 29th?
29th.
All right. Can we have a motion for?
Motion for public hearings on July 29th.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have some recommendations for us?
I do, I do. Six public hearings to be scheduled from the Planning Commission's June 2nd meeting. Most of the public hearings were, were handled in a, in a very efficient manner. There was one where there was a cer, where there was a good deal of public input, so we expect that one will have a good deal of public input at, at the city council level as well, and we would recommend either July 29th or August 5th as public hearing dates for these six items.
We're going to have all of them in one night.
Then we just do July 29th.
Do you want these all on one night, or do you want them?
That, that will be entirely up to you. We can, we can do, we can split them up, or we can take them all on one night.
How many were on what we just approved on the 29th? What was that one?
They were two, but they're administrative. They won't.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there won't be.
I expect there to be very little input on those two zoning ordinance amendments from the public. Mr. Taylor's already given us all his feedback.
29th, 29th. I'll make a motion, we see it on the further 29th. Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to, on motion, we have fiscal year 22 hazard pay stipends. Ms. Tucker.
Good evening. Council approved payment of $2,500 stipends to those considered essential personnel and $1,500 to all other city employ, full-time city employees as part of the FY22 budget. The information I presented in my memo outlines the parameters for these payments. First, I just want to point out that they will be treated like a one-time bonus for payroll and IRS purposes, and we use the American Rescue Plan Act guidance to identify essential personnel so that if we are able to request reimbursement from the grant, those physicians will line up with what the grant shows, and those factors used to determine the essential classification and compasses, public safety, public health, and transit employees. And so those positions are detailed in the attachment to your communication. In addition, the mayor will need to formally declare those positions as essential personnel for that grant. Other parameters include that employees must have been actively full-time employed on January 1 of this year and still employed on July 1, and then payroll will work to distribute those stipends, hopefully in August. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just had one comment just to throw out here to you guys, just, I, I was looking at the date frame and just kind of was wondering, I, I, you know, kind of why January 1st, and really what got me looking at it was a Friday and it's a holiday, so there's really, you know, nobody would have started January 1st, and so it really kind of goes back to having to be in, employed last year, and I really didn't know, I couldn't just put it together in my mind what that had to do with, you know, why we're giving the stipend people who worked through the COVID scenario, and the only thing I could really come up with is like a March 15th date, which is when, you know, the mask mandate went away. The county who handles all of our health stuff said, you know, this is, you know, this is kind of the time that everything by that time was lifted. And I don't know, I just have this thing in my mind. I didn't like, I don't like the way that they're doing the, the grant money, you know, they keep changing around. A lot of it doesn't seem to have anything to do with COVID. I just kind of was thinking for our purposes that we would line that up, and I tried to look back. I called Craig the other day about kind of some, you know, some dates of when did we open back City Hall and when did we do all that, and the only thing I could really feel like come up with that was a clean number was by the time the county health department, you know, that's not a date, we're just sort of just picking, because, you know, there's always going to be somebody who feels like they were just barely left out, right? Somebody who got hired January 10th versus December 30th. But, you know, that March 15th was a number we didn't choose, that's, the health department chose it, and by then, pretty much everything is, kind of, we're through the, the difficult COVID period by then for sure. So I was just going to throw it out there, maybe we make it March 15th, so, so at least we can, we don't have to answer questions about why'd you choose this date, and there's really not an answer for it, to be honest. I mean, that's kind of where I was at with it. And I, I figured we don't, we didn't hire all that many people between December 30th and.
No, it was about 25, about 25 people.
So it'd be about 25 extra people would get it that way, who, you know, technically were here during the mask mandate, which is essentially, because, you know, January 1st, there was a big spike in cases even, if you remember, for that first part of January, so if that's why we're doing it, that's kind of what I thought would, something we, I could match up to. So it'd be 25 extra folks or whatever, that'd be 40, 50,000 bucks or something.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we're going to be able to get that reimbursed. So I don't know, I, I could get behind that. Anybody got any major? That's about the only thing I had any questions about, about it.
You want to make that as a motion?
If nobody else has any questions, I'll make a motion, we approve what you guys put in front of us with one amendment, that with the starting workday would be pushed out to March 15th, which is a Monday.
Starting workday or?
To have been employed on March 15th.
Yeah, you had to have been.
Still employed on July 1st.
Still employed on July 1st, but you would have had to have.
We're saying actively working.
Actively working, yeah, by March 15th.
Have a motion, have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the transit facility design amendment. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Kayla Walker, and tonight I am representing staff to ask for approval of Amendment 1 to the Transit Facilities Design Contract. The transit project moved from the Main Street location to the Bridge Avenue New Salem site in August 2020. Due to the change in locations, certain professional services that were in the original design agreement are no longer needed. Other changes included in this amendment are additional design services, updated labor and overhead rates from the initial 2018 agreement, and increasing the design-to-construction cost limit from the 2018 agreement's estimate of 9.2 to 11 million. Approval of the contract amendment with HGR Engineering will result in a deduct of $210,616, adjusting the contract amount to $1,385,594. The design contract funding breakdown is 80% federal, 10% state, and 10% local match with a local funding source from the fiscal year 2019 budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have renovations in additions to Fire Rescue Station 3.
The next item is a request for approval of the design agreement with CMH Architects in the amount of $41,600 for Fire Station 3 renovations. The scope of this project includes demolition of the existing unisex restroom and locker room and putting a small addition at the rear of the building to create a separate men's and women's restroom and locker room space, a dedicated laundry and decon space, and a new storage room to be accessible from a rear patio area. The construction costs are preliminary estimated at $250,000 and will be funded from the 2019 loan proceeds for ADA improvements and Fire Station 3 renovations. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
All right, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we now have Taxiway A and Ramp Pavement Rehabilitation Design Work Authorization. All right, we have approach design work authorization. Mr. Kirky.
All right, the second work authorization here is also with Barge, and it's for the amount of $71,800, and this is for design work on the south approach for runway 36 to make sure we maintain our safety and efficiency of the runway and the approaches into the airport. Again, this is 100% federally funded.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have approach design work authorization. Mr. Kirky.
All right, the second work authorization here is also with Barge, and it's for the amount of $71,800, and this is for design work on the south approach for runway 36 to make sure we maintain our safety and efficiency of the runway and the approaches into the airport. Again, this is 100% federally funded.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Anything else, Mr. Kirky?
That's it, thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move to air packs and cylinders for the new 75-foot aerial ladder truck. Mr. Tooms.
Good evening. How y'all doing today?
Good. Be good.
If RRD desires to purchase five Airpack X3 Pro SCBA's and 10 air cylinders for a total of $40,778, the air packs and cylinders are for the new 75-foot aerial ladder truck, which should be completed. We got a new updated date for it. It's going to be October 2021 now. MFRD requires requests approval to purchase these air packs and cylinders from MES through the Houston Galveston Area Council Corporate Purchasing Program. Corporate purchasing is permitted by the state statute and the city purchasing code. You have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we all moved to item 33, the approval to purchase fire equipment from a single-source provider. Mr. Tooms.
MFRD desires to purchase task force tip nozzles, valves, gauges, et cetera, known as appliances, totaling $60,730. Equipment for the new 75-foot aerial truck, which should be completed, like I said, October 2021, and two new pumper trucks to be completed September 2022. MFRD requests approval to purchase this equipment from EBS GNW Diesel, as they are the primary strategic dealer for task force tip products in the state of Tennessee. MFRD uses task force tip nozzle appliances on all apparatuses we have. Different brands of nozzle and applies are not inoperable with each other. Person task force tip product will maintain inoperability within the department. MFRD has personnel that are trained and certified in repair task force tips, nozzles, and appliances. Be glad to answer any questions.
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now will move to the employment agreement for the city recorder, city treasurer, and the finance director, which is just one position.
Exactly. Good evening, mayor, members of council. On June 3, the council voted unanimously to appoint Jennifer Brown as the city's new city recorder, city treasurer, and finance director, and requested that I engage in contract negotiations with Ms. Brown on an employment agreement. Attached is a copy of the employment agreement that we negotiated and that Ms. Brown has signed, and I have approved as the form. It is, I recommend its approval, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Good contract. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ms. Wright, how many more meetings do we have with you?
One, I think. I think we're not going to meet July 8th.
I think we're still working on the date.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Whether it'll be the 1st or the 8th.
Okay, then maybe two. I'll be here.
All right, we need to move to the purchase of a TK-52 XP track 52-inch rotary mower. Sounds expensive.
It is. It's actually cheaper than the one we're currently operating that's 17 years old. But, mayor, members of council, I'm back again. I'm going to try to follow the Kirky Show. We are, on Bath Street Department, we're trying to seek approval to purchase a new track ditch mower. Our current ditch mower is 17 years old. It's unreliable, and it's really underpowered, and its unreliability basically slows down our delivery of services. We're looking to purchase it out of stormwater funds. The new machine is tracked, and it's remote control operated, so it's much safer on our staff. They'll be able to stay away from the machine. It's, you know, the ditches that we mow, we mow those because they're not easily maintained by the typical commercial equipment or by homeowners. So it's very steep slopes, so it's safer for these guys to be out of the way of that machine while they're operating it. It's even got a little video camera on it, so they can see exactly what's going on on that machine. But, you know, this technology is actually being used by the Stones River National Battlefield down here. We saw them using it one day, went down there, and one of the guys called me, he's like, man, you got to see this. And we went down there, and they let us run it. I probably shouldn't have said that, but... But we've talked to a few different municipal...
Nobody heard.
Not on our behalf, but on theirs.
Our sacred.
But anyway, it's, it is less.
Appreciate you doing that over at my house, too. That was awesome. Appreciate that. That was nice.
I probably shouldn't have said that.
No, but it is less to replace this or use this model than the one we've currently got. We are looking for approval on this, and if you've got any further questions, I'm here to answer any of them for you.
I'm not going to make the motion.
I have a question on something I saw the other day.
Yes, ma'am.
Going down Haynes Drive, there were two trucks mowing, and they were in like a little cab, and they were sharp. I mean, they had the blade extended about from here to Bill, and they were doing the Haynes Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was sharp.
Oh, thank you. That was our boom mower. We were probably cutting that guardrail back.
Yes, yes.
Right there around Tomahawk where it comes out.
Yeah, I was very impressed.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
You want to make a motion, Madeline?
I will. Make a motion.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion in second.
He hasn't had his medicine. Don't worry.
I like him like that.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have some licensing. You have four different beer permits. Ms. Wright, they all in order?
They are all in order. We have, the hotel has finished all of their codes inspections as well as the background checks, so it's ready to issue if you approve it tonight. The other three, no, I take that back. Also, the restaurant on Northwest Broad Street, they finished their building codes inspections this afternoon, so they're also ready to issue. They're a new owner. The other two do lack finishing building codes inspections, so we would not issue until that has been complete if you approve these tonight.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion in second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.